Commissioner Tilly and Commissioner Evans and Frankfurt. It's been well documented about the things that's going on over there. Guys coming and going, stealing cars, doing all those type of things. So much so that we passed an emergency ordinance to let those guys know that we weren't going to just sit by and let that happen. During that time, the issues has continued even to date. I wrote a letter to be sent, registered mail to Secretary Tilly about the lack of communication and help coming from his Department of Corrections. The original letter was sent August 19th. The last correspondence I had with my colleagues up here was the 31st of August after where I requested that that letter be sent and a copy to copy the governor. I pretty much assumed that it happened. Continued to speak with, I have continued to speak with state representatives, just recently had a meeting with supervisor Keaton along with our police chief, also the sheriff and a couple of deputies there along with deputy jailer. Forwarded all of that to you guys. Just want to make sure that everybody knows what's going on. Also forwarded the letter that I-
What did you forward?
I didn't get anything.
I didn't get anything.
Well, I forwarded it to the city manager.
Yeah, I received it, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Just so you guys will know what's going on. I have continued to meet with state reps about this issue. Talked to several people, numerous people that live in the neighborhood wanting to know the status of it. I get an email from the mayor this afternoon that it's on your desk. And I'm like, okay. I had spoken to the city manager. I had sent an email also to Ms. Burtzong wanting to know, have we gotten any kind of correspondence from Frankfurt informing us that they've received our letter? I spoke with the city manager to ask if we had gotten anything. He said, no.
And still have not.
Still have not. Well, you're not going to get any response from my letter because it's on your desk. And what I'm asking is where might you get that authority to hold up my letter that I sent to Frankfurt as a city commissioner of the City of Paducah that's part of a board, a city manager, former government, where the only difference that you have and me is that you run our meetings and in cases of emergency, the governor will come by your office. So explain to me how you hijacked my letter.
Well, with all due respect, I definitely did not hijack your letter.
Did you send it?
It has not been sent.
And why is that?
You've known about that for about six weeks.
That it hasn't been? I have not had any correspondence from you that you had not, we talked about that. There was a correspondence with the city manager and he sent out a letter to you guys letting you know what I was doing. I think Commissioner Wilson sent her opinion on how she felt that it would be better if we sent a letter as a unit, right?
As did I. As did I. I sent that as well.
Right. That's your opinion and you're entitled to it. But that doesn't, that doesn't, I'm still confused on how my letter wasn't sent.
So because we are on the team, it means that we typically act as a team, correct, Commissioner? Which means that, can I finish? I was respectful for you. Can I offer some thoughts?
This is Commissioner comments and I'm still commenting.
Oh, excuse me. I thought you were looking for-
That's okay. I'm sure you will. We, you know, the beauty of this commission is you have, and Commissioner Wilson, you mentioned this the other day when we were talking about this, is that we all are, we're elected because we have, we're different even though we're a unit. We have certain passions even though we say when we're campaigning that we want the best for the city and I believe everybody up here does. So if an individual commissioner feels that there is an issue within the community that threatens the safety of its citizens and feel to take the initiative to address that for another member of our city manager, former government, not mayor council form, take it upon his or herself to just, we're not going to do that. I'm confused on that. I'm not sure where that type of authority may come from. I'm done.
So I never wielded authority over this decision. I asked the question to our other commissioners who are on our team, do you feel comfortable with this letter? And the resounding answer was, no, I do not because there were some parts of the letter, actually the very end of the letter said, on behalf of the commission, I'm sending this letter. But the commission didn't see the letter until we sent it out in an email and then you got the feedback that you received from some of our commissioners which said, I'm not 100% comfortable with this, can we take a different approach? So this was never an effort to wield any authority, Commissioner. I asked the other team members on our team what they thought about this. I think there is a really legitimate way that we can handle this as a team by talking about what the best approach is. So I don't understand how I'm being portrayed right now as this authority wielding person when I in fact asked the opinion of every other person up here on this team. So I don't know.
You don't understand where I'm coming from at all?
Of course I understand that you're frustrated that the letter you wrote did not get sent. That makes a lot of sense to me. But what you're saying right now is that I decided to use authority that's not granted to me and I don't see how that happened.
Well, you decided not to send it.
No, I asked our team members if they felt comfortable with it going out with their, you invoked the commission in your letter, sir. You said, on behalf of the commission, I'm sending this letter and no one said, we approve of the letter. That's how we do things as a group, right?
As a member of the Board of Commissioners.
No, the end of the letter says, on behalf of the commissioners. Now, if we want to change that and everyone else agrees, I think the other piece of this is that, let's talk about how we really want to solve this problem as a team. I mean, the letter, there was a letter sent that said to the secretary, to the governor that we've changed our ordinances, we've done this thing, be on, be aware of that, right? That letter was sent, the very factual letter.
Along with the ordinance.
Along with the ordinances. So, but your letter was written, as you stated at the end of it, on behalf of the commission and I don't think that's appropriate. If we all want to write a letter together, we should write the letter together. If we want to have moments for comment and feedback on your letter and make it as a team effort, then I think we should definitely do that. I think your letter in some form is still very merited and I agree with sending something. From my personal perspective as the mayor, I agree with sending something. I think we need to send it as a team or decide not to and you need to take that part off your letter and send it on your own.
When you mentioned that, I've known about it for how long?
You know about what?
That the letter wasn't sent, how long?
From my understanding, several weeks.
Where did that come from? Several weeks?
From Lindsey, from the city manager?
I talked to the city manager about, had we had any response from the letter that was sent? He said, no. I said, what about my letter? He goes, well, it's, we're waiting on sign offs on it. But I haven't, I sent a letter to, an email to Ms. Burtzong inquiring, had we received any correspondence from Frankfurt? Never heard from her.
But you had, but you were copied on the letter where the, your letter, or sorry, the email where your letter was scanned, sent out to the commissioners and then you had some responses, I'm pretty certain.
The ones that I mentioned.
Okay.
Before, just at the beginning of my comments here.
And did, were the responses from the commissioners, yes, please send the letter?
No, the letter that I, I did that as a courtesy. I wasn't asking your permission to send it.
But if you're speaking on our behalf, shouldn't you?
I'm speaking on behalf of the citizen of Paducah, more specifically the ones that live in that neighborhood.
But if you're signing the letter on behalf of the city of commission, shouldn't you consult with us before you send a letter like that?
I did.
On City of Paducah letterhead.
Exactly, which I am a member of.
Because to me, I mean, I feel like the authority being invoked, you know, you took the meeting in Frankfurt, which I think is wonderful. You never talked to any of us that you were going, you never updated any of us on the meeting, you never said, these are my concerns, you know, I mean, I feel like that this has been something you feel passionately about, but as you know, as a member of the Board of Commissioners, like we said, like we're a team and we definitely, absolutely have a bigger impact on the state level as a team. But, you know, from my own perspective, I thought, wow, this is really important to him, I should look into this and talk to people, but you never called any of us and said, hey, let's talk about what I'm finding out. It was just, you know, this is what I'm doing and sign on. And then after having conversations with other people at the meeting in Frankfurt, there was a much different outcome presented to us, that the state has been responsive, that the state did do what they said they were going to do at that meeting in Frankfurt. And that's when I became uncomfortable with presenting a letter on this path of the entire Board of Commissioners saying, you're not doing what you're supposed to, when there are other people who went to the meeting in Frankfurt that said the state has held up their end of the bargain and the state has done what they said they were going to do. But you never called, you never said, hey, this is, these are my concerns, let's talk about this, when you, you know, Commissioner Rhodes had some very strong concerns with the letter. So I know you know there was exchanges about the letter.
And I made those exchanges with Commissioner Rhodes. The information that I got unsolicited from several people in the community, professional people, when I got them, I forwarded them to the city manager. Now, if you didn't get those, I'm not the one you need to talk to. I did that so that everybody would know what I was finding out. Isn't that what you do? So you got the information in front of you, if you have comments about it, you think, whoa, wait a minute, what's this? Fine. And as far as the state's concerned, the meeting that I was, that I attended in the sheriff's office, that place continues to be very dangerous in that neighborhood. So, hey, we want to get folks down here to talk about it, that's-
But the meeting at the state was not arguing with the state about whether or not that situation is dangerous or there's a problem with this particular house or in this neighborhood. I don't think the state's arguing that point. From my understanding, the meeting in Frankfurt was, we would like you to do these list of things and the state said, absolutely, and then they did them. So I don't understand why we're still, you know, I don't think anybody's arguing with you about whether the situation is untenable or whether there are concerns. No one's arguing that point with you. The state, us, no one up here. So I don't understand, what we're trying to say is, you know, stating that it's dangerous, which is a thing that no one else is arguing up here in a forceful way, is not getting us closer to a solution and throwing people under the bus or be it the state, be it the city manager or whatever, it doesn't get us closer to a solution we can all agree on because while we are absolutely empowered as individual city commissioners, we also don't ever act alone, correct? Beyond just advocating and talking to the people in our community, which is very important and talking up here. But to say, I can go despite the discomfort of the other members of the city commissioners to the state and accuse the state of certain things, I think is concerning. I think that is a concern.
Well, apparently you didn't read the letter very well. I wasn't accusing the state of anything except the facility here in Paducah, it's terrible. And it's not just me saying that, it's documented.
But again, no one's arguing that case. No one is disagreeing with you on that.
Well, the meeting that I attended in Frankfurt, you're right, it was about, okay, this is what we want done. Okay, we're going to do those things. Okay. So when you look at what's going on over there presently, those concerns are still, there are several of those concerns are still out there, not have been taken care of. And so what, so here we are, the state has a terrible problem of overcrowding inmates. They're looking to move these people from point A to point B. The meeting that I attended with Chief Barnhill, it's, I said, what would disqualify a parolee from being, participating in this program? He goes, what do you mean? I don't know. Drugs? Would drugs be a deterrent? Would get them kicked out? His response was, well, how much? I'm like, oh, is there an acceptable level? See, these things are happening, they're continuing to happen and we talk about things up here all the time that's uncomfortable. We knew that when we jumped in the fishbowl, that's what it is. This particular situation here is, will continue to be uncomfortable. The people that live in that neighborhood will continue to be uncomfortable until that building, that facility is gone. So, again, I-
No one, particularly me, is arguing with you that there's a problem with our prisons and our criminal justice system. Believe me, I would never argue that this situation is working. My problem is the idea that as leaders of this community that recognizes a problem that affect our neighborhood, I just don't think it is a, I don't know the word, I want creative or community minded or thoughtful approach to just say, get rid of it. And I don't know if that's even an option.
Of course it is. It's an option. It's been here 25 years and it's not enhancing the neighborhood.
Do you think that our job is to walk through neighborhoods and shut down businesses we don't think are enhancing the neighborhood?
Oh, this is not just any business.
No, I don't, but we have to have legal authority to do things.
We're not talking about doing anything illegal.
Okay. Can I?
Can I jump in? Commissioner Abraham, Commissioner Holland, beginning of the conversation, we talked about a letter being sent, not being sent. I think that's been established, that that letter is now been under review and we're trying to figure out the best way to handle that. The other letter that was sent, grabbed the ordinance that was passed by this body, we did send it to the state, they've given notice, have not received receipt of the certified mail yet, but I'm sure it's coming. But that document puts in place what Commissioner Abraham's talking about. Now we'll have this legal process started, you know, and we can follow that and pursue that based upon, you know, the direction of legal counsel that was provided to this body.
And that's the letter that contains the ordinance, right?
Yes. The ordinance though is where we're going to get our ability, our authority to proceed down the path that we need to go. They've been put on notice and we've now are going to hold them accountable for what's going on, you know, to come in the future. At the same time, we passed the municipal order requiring the notification of the neighbors so and so forth. We're working on putting those particulars together. I did receive a notification from Commissioner Bartman at the county that he received notice from the state that there was going to be a statewide notification system set up supposedly by the end of this month to assist us with that as well. I talked to Chief today about the meeting that you guys had a few weeks ago, about another meeting coming up, this was supposedly scheduled for this Friday, is still tentative whether it's set or not set. He's not heard confirmation about that. So I think we continue to make progress. My understanding is that probation and parole was not at the meeting that you attended a couple of weeks ago, which we still need to get them to the table because they basically have control of about 51, 50% of the operation there. And as we've spoke-
Fifty-six inmates.
Yeah. After our last conversation, you said that the people were not present who need to be present at the meeting.
Correct.
So we need to have that meeting to get them there. So I think we're making progress. The building itself, as you mentioned, has been there for more than 20 years. It's one of those things where we don't have the ability to shut it down yesterday, but we do have the ability to manage it as we move forward by utilizing the authority that we have through the ordinance that was passed. I think we're going at the right pace and the right steps to try to mitigate that out there. But as far as the letter being supported by the commission, of course, I'm going to leave that up to the commission. But as far as trying to share documents, I believe I tried to get everything out that I possibly can. There might have been one that I missed, I don't recall that, but you have kept me in the loop. I try to share that information. And as far as the letter though, I'm not sure how the council, the commission wants to proceed, whether you ask Commissioner Abraham to tweak in the letter and he submits it, or if you're going to work together. I did ask Commissioner Abraham at that time if he was okay with this board countersigning it. He said he was okay with the countersigning of the document and seeing it together, but if it needs tweaked or edited, I'd leave it up to this body to determine that, so.
Are you talking about the letter you sent on August 19th where the subject line says, the following letter will be forwarded to Secretary Tilly and copied to Governor Bevan?
Correct.
And it's signed just by you?
Right.
So for all we would know, really, in reality, you would have just sent that.
I'm sorry.
Well, in reality, I mean, the subject line says, the following letter will be forwarded to Secretary Tilly and copied to Governor Bevan. You put the body of it in here and then sign it Commissioner Abraham.
Yes.
But you sent it to City Hall for it to be sent, right?
On letterhead, yes.
To, for it to be sent on letterhead, okay. All I would just say is that in my experience, in my humble opinion, when we're dealing with the state government or the federal government, we do have so much more strength when we appear as a united community. And if a letter is going to be sent, to me, it should have been sent from the city commission with a copy of the ordinance, which is what you have done.
Well, we sent the ordinance, the emergency ordinance that was unanimously voted upon. Now, keep in mind, I held back on that letter. I rewrote it because I was-
The letter with the ordinance or the other letter? There's two letters, right?
Right. Well, prior to the emergency ordinance, and I stated that the night that we passed that ordinance, that, and you guys know how I felt about this whole situation. But I'm like, you know what, I'm going to hold up on that because we're going to take a different route on how to deal, after talking to council about how to do that, let's establish some things. Okay. All right, I would rather bulldoze the place now, relocate those guys, but understand the process. After that, we unanimously passed that emergency ordinance. I sent, the intention was to send that letter that I wrote in tow of that. So it's, there was nothing in that letter that, this is obviously opinion, I reckon, but there was nothing in that ordinance that wasn't true, that wasn't factual. It just, it gave a clear picture of the urgency. You know, the state government moves extremely slow. City Hall moves slow. State government moves even slower. Meanwhile, you have individuals keeping their head on a swivel when they go out in their neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods. So the urgency, it's still there, it will be there until it's not there. So if these guys want to come down and we want to have a powwow right here and talk about it, the, nothing's really going to change. They will tell us things we already know. We'll tell Keaton stats that they already know.
Are you not happy with the state's response? I take it, because they put on hold sending anybody else and then we have somebody coming now. But they put on, they did what you asked, which was suspend sending anybody new, correct?
No. Keaton is bed driven. If there's an empty bed and there's an available person to fill that bed, they're going to get it.
I believe that the state did not communicate to you that they would put it on hold.
They haven't put it on hold.
I was communicating something different.
That's okay. That's all right. We'll see how it works out.
Commissioner, would you be open to possibly redrafting that letter that includes the invitation to set up some kind of meeting so that we can understand the ins and outs? I mean, I think that this is a good example of how this body works well. So thank you for your leadership in stepping in and starting this conversation months and months and months ago. I think that at the end of the line though, when it comes to for other people making decisions and, which we've already followed your lead on and passed two ordinances, kind of blindly in some ways because we don't know all the details of what the state has done and hasn't done. Obviously, there's some discrepancies here. So I think if there's a way for us to be able to get on that understanding with you, whatever that looks like, I can, I mean, I'm willing to take your lead on that as well.
As far as getting, trying to get the state down here to, for a conversation about Keaton Correctional, absolutely. Also, I hope they bring the contract that they signed, that they held, that they're holding Keaton responsible for, because I would love to see the details in that, given their track record, that being Keaton. It would be amazing to me that those numbers are acceptable and was written in such a way in that contract that hasn't been pulled.
Well, I think we can get that quickly, just hit me, because I know you've asked for it and you've been waiting for it to come. But what if we just did a open records request?
That'll work.
Do we think that's the right way? I mean, that's the easiest?
Well, he's asked for it for weeks now and he's not getting it.
To Keaton, so you would submit an open record-
No.
To the state for that.
Yeah, I can work with Lindsey in getting that done. Just like us, we have to-
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. I just wanted to say before we wrap this up, these types of situations come up and I always check my motives to make sure that I'm doing what I'm doing for the right reasons. And I think this is, and that simple request for the contract to find out what the do's and don'ts and what Keaton is held responsible for doing and the state is, in the middle of that is us, right? So if, we don't know what that contract says, but we're in the middle of it. So if there's any holes in it, then we're going to feel the heat on that. So we need to make sure that we understand exactly what everybody is responsible for doing.
I would like to suggest that we include the county in this conversation as well. Commissioner Bartman has been, and he's not here tonight, but he's been at several of our meetings when this has been discussed. I know the two of you went to Frankfurt. You know, I didn't know about that before, but that was okay. As I've said before, and you quoted me, I do think we're a stronger body when we all have our different passions. That's your passion and I respected that, you for that, for going and taking there and following up with us later. But I do think this is an important issue for the city and the county. Bill Bartman, Commissioner, has been very involved with it. I think that we need to include them in these conversations.
Well, he pretty much initiated it.
He did. So I think that it's important, you know, as I've said, that we come across, we're stronger when we're a united community. And so if we're wanting to ask for things from the state for this, if you've got the City of Paducah, McCracken County commissioners working together, it's going to have a much stronger response.
Well, that sounds real good and I hope that works out for us. But when you have the principles in the room, and this is just my personal opinion, it needs to be plain talking. I understand the issue that the state correctional system has, I get that. And I understand out of sight, out of mind. And I understand what bed driven means. And so when you have all of those things on the table and then you look at, here we are in Paducah and we're dealing with this facility that is a major headache, not only for that community, but for our law enforcement, emergency services, it's a major headache. We need to make sure that we let these guys know when we get face to face with them as a team, to let them know that it's, the way it's operating now is totally unacceptable.
With all due respect, I think we all understand it. Yeah, thank you.
I don't think anybody disagrees with you on that.
So moving forward, can we, can someone up here talk with Commissioner Bartman to coordinate the invitation? I know he's been speaking with Secretary Tilly already.
Sure.
Do you-
I will do that.
Okay.
Everybody feel comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Commissioner Abraham, I think we've all been comfortable with you working on that in the lead. Nobody's questioned you on that at all. I've respected you for doing that, I've appreciated you for doing that and I have voiced that to you in these meetings, that I appreciate you taking the lead on that issue. I understand it's an important issue, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
And I appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments tonight?
Okay.
All right, we have Randy Beeler here to speak.
I was fixing to compliment on how jovial y'all was and I hope when I'm done, Ms. Wilson, we all have a big group hug. I learned a lot of new words, as I said before, and I seen diversity in action tonight. I've seen tolerance in action. Transparency. We'll discuss a little transparency. Mr. Art, this is a question to you, sir. I don't know if you've been filled in about why we show up every week, but in 2016, and I understand that I can only relate to the Human Rights Commission minutes of the meeting and the Paducah sun, because what happened, we were not included in any of it. Somewhere or another, commission ended up now at Human Rights, six people out of the city of Paducah, a city of twenty-five thousand, had a complaint about our float in the parade. No one come to us and said, you know, hey, we got a problem. They proceeded, I don't know how it went down up here, but they proceeded and a resolution was formed or drafted up here to keep us out of the parade. We have been fighting this situation for quite some time. I firmly believe there's no such thing as a problem. I always believe there's only a situation. It doesn't become a problem till one person or the other is unwilling to work. By taking us out of this parade, it didn't physically harm us, but it did strip us of our integrity. If anyone sat down and just review what we've accomplished in the last ten years as citizens of Paducah. The community service, as I said before, three of us have lifetime achievement awards signed by Barack Obama. I would challenge any group to see who's got that. My point is, October fourth, eleven AM, Parade Board's going to meet again. We've been trying to figure this out and it's the only thing I can come up with. Is this going to be a closed meeting or an open meeting?
For the Parade Board Committee?
Parade Board, yes, sir.
It's a working committee, so it'll be a closed meeting.
So, okay. How would you say we should go about requesting another vote from the Parade Committee and us being there to defend ourselves? See, I understand, sir, what it's like to have something happen and everybody not being informed as to what went on. A boy from Mississippi called me and told me we were not in the parade. Now, that's pretty bad in your own little town. And, and you know, like I said, what's going on up here, yeah, okay, I understand hurt feelings and stuff. Our feelings are hurt. Our integrity is torn. My youngest daughter was standing in a situation the other day where a very uppity type woman referred to me as a feminine product and a rear end. And my daughter looked at her and said, that's my dad. She'd been watching me and you over here with our conversation. By the way, Sarah, I did appreciate you texting me the other night and it's clear me and you are in different galaxies, but it's all right. You're entitled to your opinion and I'm entitled to mine. I don't know why we can't cure this. We've been trying so hard and I don't know why we can't get it cured. It's give and take. We're willing to give, but nobody else is. We would like to be at this meeting and we would like to have them vote again. Is that a way to resolve it? Mr. Thompson told me if I could get Mr. Abraham to make a motion and somebody second it. I didn't ask the other day, Ms. Wilson, would you second that motion?
This is not, I don't think this for discussion here today.
Well, I know, that's pretty simple. It's just transparency. I mean, nobody's going to second it and I know what y'all feel like. I know you feel like you can't step back, but we can step back. We can sit down and figure this out to where it's not going to hurt anybody. We don't want to embarrass the city commission. If we did, we'd be throwing stones. We don't do that. But we want our integrity back. We want people to look at us and think we're still good guys. We are good guys. And what about this meeting? What do you suggest?
I've already answered you once.
It's a closed meeting.
It's a closed meeting.
So how do we get into an open meeting?
This is the open meeting.
No, I'm talking about the Parade Board. A straight up and down vote so we can watch and see or at least defend ourselves.
That's a closed meeting. This is an open meeting.
So could they submit letters to the Parade Board?
Yes, they sure can.
Okay, now let me ask you all this. Let's just say, which I can tell you right now, the Parade Board would okay us, because when I walked in the other day, they all knew me. There's no doubt in my mind that they would pass it. What would y'all do? Would you rescind this resolution?
A minute ago, you said, we're offering to give. What are you offering to give? I'm just out of curiosity.
I just want you to rescind this resolution here tonight and we won't ask to be in your parade. That's about as fair as I can get. You won't have to see us down there in your parade. Now, I can't speak for Mr. Swinford, the little old man, but I can speak for our group. Can it get any fairer than that? Well, the problem was, y'all didn't like our float because of our flag. By the way, I'm going to invite y'all out October sixth, we're going to raise an orphans flag out the park. And we've also going to have our new monument dedicated to the sixty to ninety thousand black Confederates. Now, we'll have a special day for that one, but it'll be out there to be seen. Y'all are welcome. I don't know if y'all can come at once or not, but you're welcome. Now, back to mine. Talk to me.
Can I say something, please? I do want to say that I'm sincerely sorry you were not more included in the conversation when we began talking about the parade. I'm very sorry for that. Somebody should have approached your group and I regret that you learned about it in that way and I want to offer my sincere apology about that. And I understand, as I told you yesterday and since WPSD filmed it, I guess it's not a private conversation. So, you know, I'm sorry that you now feel something that brings you a great source of pride people are asking you to feel ashamed of. I don't want you guys to feel ashamed. I don't. And I don't want you to feel like you've lost your integrity and I'm very sorry about that. And, you know, I'm not, I don't know what a great solution is at this point. I think that if, you know, if you feel like the only thing that would make you happy is to rescind the resolution, I mean, that's something we'll all have to talk about.
We've talked about it for a year and a half, Ms. Holland.
I don't understand, I don't understand how if you, if you don't, if you want the resolution rescinded and you don't want to be in the parade, why you need to go to the parade meeting, but other than that.
Well, if we go to the parade meeting, we can present our side. We can present it to the gentleman that's going to make the decisions. Now, you know and I know, if they vote to put us back in the parade, it's still not going to happen here unless you guys do this. And all we're asking you to do is do this. We're parades all over the country. We win awards, trophies, we spend a lot of money on it. We could have toned our flag down. We could have flew the first national. Most of you might know what it is, might not know what it is. We could have flew the orphans flag, which we're fixing to put up over the park. We could have flew the Bonnie Blue. There's so many flags we could have flown. Somebody just walked up and said, hey, guys, we think there's a problem here. Now, like I said before, we've been this parade five years, had never had a problem with any one. The closest thing to a problem I had, I had two black women attacking me on Broadway. They throw their arms around me, they kissed me, they got their pictures took with me and asked me, was the South going to rise again? I told them, I hope to hell not in this heat. We had a big laugh, had a good time. This chain, this penny with cross in it was given to me by a World War II veteran, six years ago. I wear it every day. Proud of the veterans. Most of our guys are veterans. We didn't want to fight with the city. You think we enjoy coming down here? Y'all at least getting paid for it. It cost me, I'd rather been riding my motorcycle tonight. This is not complicated. It's a pretty simple solution. Rescind the resolution and you guys probably never will see us again ever. We have no interest in beating you up, beating you down. I don't mean physically beating you up. I'm very careful nowadays, but, no, you seen tonight what you felt like when you thought somebody went behind your back and done something, something you weren't totally aware of. At least y'all have the opportunity to cure it. We can't, we just come down and throw ourselves at your mercy. And as far as, like I said, our integrity, I got two daughters. My daughters are thirty-two and thirty-five and they love their daddy to death and they have to look on the internet, me and you had that conversation and see people talking about me. Or they get to see a lot of people brag on me, but they get to see a lot of people talk bad about me, just like people do you two. I read. I'm not illiterate, I read. And I feel for you, because nobody should go through that. I was asked out there on the sidewalk the night they had LBGt, what did you feel about that in there? I said, I don't care what goes on in there. As long as them people are not stepping on my toes, not infringing on my rights, my ability to express myself, I don't care what they do. Black community, I don't care. We just in rested and doing our thing. We run a museum. It's open to everybody. Ms. Holland, you spent two hours in there. Is there not a whole wall dedicated to black Confederates and Union soldiers? Sure there is. We do history. We don't, we don't do protest. Otherwise, we'd have a big protest. We don't do that. We could fill this room with our membership. We just keep it down to me and these two guys. And we all get, y'all get offended because we don't hear so well, so we get a little loud when we're trying to talk, but it's okay.
Can I ask you a question, Randy?
There's your question, sure.
Would you be able to be in the parade and fly one of the six flags of the United States Armed Forces?
We did that last year.
You did?
We had every, yeah, you should have been there. We had every, we had every military flag down there. We had Confederate battle flag too. And if, okay, I know, y'all are extremely educated and depending on what you read and how you read, the battle flag's a bad thing. It's not. It didn't become a bad thing till nineteen fifties and sixties. That's when the Klan picked it up and made a racial symbol out of it. It's not the flag's fault.
The resolution that I voted on was a resolution that, that very purely in my opinion stated that there are six armed forces flags that we honor on Veterans Day. And from all the research I did, that's what the federal government also says. And so I very intentionally made a choice as the mayor, as my position, my one vote of five, to support a parade committee that said, anyone shall be in the parade as long as they're flying one of six flags. Is there not an option here for you and your team to be in the parade?
Sure, we can fly all six of them, but we're still going to fly the Confederate flag. We are sons of Confederate veterans.
See, that's where you're not giving. That's where you're not giving from your side. You said, you said you want to do give and take and so I don't hear anything from you that you're giving back in this conversation. And that's where we've gotten stuck, right, all along?
Well, okay, I'll do this with you.
No one is saying, don't be in the parade. Randy, can I finish my statement, please, without you interrupting me?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just like y'all, I'm no different than y'all are. Go ahead.
I know, it's fine. So I, um, I don't think, I don't think anyone, unless I'm wrong, is saying that you shouldn't be in the parade. I, I don't think anyone's saying that. What we're saying are, here are the rules by which we created for the parade and if your float can meet those rules, you are always welcome. So is there not a reality where you and your, your team could dress in Confederate outfits and walk in the parade without flying the flag? Is that not a possibility?
There is a possibility. Why don't we fly the first national?
But that's not one of the six flags that this body and the Veterans Day Parade-
If we go before, we go before the board and we talk, well, we're not representing the Confederacy if we don't fly one of their flags.
But you're dressed in the, in the uniforms. That, isn't that an honor to the people who you're trying to say that you support?
The honor is the Confederate battle flag. The Confederate battle flag was the flag of the soldiers. I'm not being ugly about that. It's St. Andrews Cross, it's a religious symbol, it's not a hate symbol and you can't educate if you don't put it out there. You fold it up and go in there. I don't want to get into that, another thing.
Well, I, I think that, I think that there is, that is the reasonable, from my perspective, I don't know if anyone else up here agrees, from my perspective, that is a reasonable middle ground to say, no one has ever said that you cannot be in the parade. I haven't heard those words and if they have-
I have.
Well, I'm sorry that you've heard that, because from my perspective, that's not the case.
We were told that the organization went loud in there.
We wrote a resolution that supported a decision of a parade committee that specifically said there is, you can fly one of six flags.
Because the parade is to honor-
Because the parade is to honor the veterans.
United States Military Service.
Yes. So I, I think it sounds like you have a few options. You can write letters to the parade committee for the October fourth meeting.
Okay, and what if they vote to put us back in it? Then where would we go from there?
I think we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there.
Well, as long as you're going to fly one of the flags that falls under the resolution, they vote to let you back into the parade with flying one of the six flags that-
We flew all six of them last year. We stood down there as every veteran come by and shook our hand, saluted us. Plus, we had our flag down there. We weren't being ugly to nobody. We were, we were received by the veterans and they all walked past us and told us that we should have been in that parade. The little lady from Channel Six was sitting right there. I looked there, I said, you getting this? And she said, yeah. Of course, nobody ever heard it or seen it. Mr. Ricardo Harding, the man that brought some of the problem on, he filmed us, but he was on Channel Six that night. And when they asked him what he thought, he said, when I looked across that street, he said, I saw no hate. Now, how are we going to educate if we do it wrong? If we don't let people know who we are, we make them guess because we're in uniform, who we are, most people don't have a clue. We're there to honor our soldiers and not just impress the people, but we like being asked, what are y'all? And we tell them, we educate. Anyways, we're not getting nowhere tonight and I'm sorry. I gave you the good option. You feel like you give me the good option? And it's okay. I can willing deal with anybody.
Well, and I'll just say this, and since we're on TV, I think you deserve me to say this and if everyone else wants to say this as well, you all have been absolutely inspiring to me to work with and I'm serious. I'm sorry if people have said negative things about you and you're right, we do understand how that feels, but we all independently know individually our good intentions, as Commissioner Abraham said earlier. We're all showing up here doing our best with our best intentions and I believe that of you, I believe that of you guys, I believe that of everyone who has come to this table and talked to us about this issue. So I just want to say thank you, because you do deserve to be given that, that benefit of the doubt and the good intention that I know you have. And you've known me for a really long time and I've known you for a really long time. But I'm, I'm sorry if we haven't answered it exactly as you had hoped, but I think that there are options on the table now and actually that's further than we've ever gotten with you being at that podium, so.